Mayor Rowan Dyke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel. Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger. Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fencham.
Here.
Our Alderman Ottinger and Alderman Hansel send their regrets for not being able to be here tonight, but we do have a quorum available. So in your package, you've received an approval of the minutes from the regular session of September 8th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented if there are no questions.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
The motion on the board to approve the minutes of the previous session, September 8th, 2020, it has been properly seconded. Will please approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And any nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. No proclamations at our recognition of citizens by the mayor? Anyone? All right, we now have communications from our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. On our monthly COVID update, the department heads are continuing to meet on Monday mornings, going over, looking at the data for the region, for our county and all the surrounding counties, and keeping everybody abreast of any new developments from the CDC or the governor. And I'm still happy to report that we've still had no cases. Well, we had the one way back, but we've had no new cases since last month. And we've not had anybody in quarantine, and everything's going good. The department heads are doing a good job in protecting their departments, and we just got to hope our luck keeps holding out. We did have a little hiccup over at the Little League football. It had to be suspended for the remainder of the week, and hopefully we'll pick it back up soon. We will be, we have taken bids. They did not have to come before you because of the small amount, but we have taken bids to demolish a house over on Clifton Heights that all of y'all are aware of. It's been a problem for a couple of years. The contract was awarded to Chad Burchett Construction to do the demolition. We only, we had two bids, and he was the low bid of forty, I think, forty-six hundred to demolish and remove all the debris.
I'm glad that you've taken care of that. It's been a sore for a long time, and nobody's been willing to do something about it. It just kept on and on. Thank you.
Well, we, it took us some time, but it's the first one we've done, so it's been a learning experience for us, but we don't intend on it being the last one. So we're hoping, you know, we, this is an absolute last resort that you do to someone's property, but we're hoping it will send a message to folks that we're just not going to tolerate it anymore, and if they're not going to maintain their property, then we're going to come in and maintain it for them. And, you know, like I say, hopefully, I think we've already with the enhanced enforcement that we've had on the codes violations, you can already tell the difference, I feel like. And I think people are getting the message that we're serious about it now. And we've had a lot of people that have went ahead and cleaned their properties up without having to be asked, and in some have had to be asked, and we're still having a few that we're having to put into court. And so that's what we're doing.
James, what do you do with that? You just put a lien on the property?
Yes, sir. I spoke with our tax attorney today about it. I told him we were getting ready to do this one, and it'll be, you know, it's a new experience for us all. We haven't, we've done things before that required a lien on cleaning up properties, but this will be the first demolition that we have done where we tear the house down. So it's a, it's going to be, it's, we got a little bit of a learning process with it. But he said that, yeah, it won't be a problem just to put a lien on it for the amount. I told him the main thing is I just don't want to lose our money. You know, it's one thing when you go in and you mow the yard, and they owe you a couple hundred dollars, but it's different when it's forty-six hundred or more. You know, we'll have some that we're looking at that's going to be more than that. So we don't want to lose money. We want to get our money back.
The more we try to get these people to clean up, the worse it got. It didn't get better at any time.
No, not till we started, started putting people into court or, you know, taking action. You know, talking to them, it's a waste of time. You just have to get their attention. The other thing that I have is unless you all have an objection, we're going to close for Election Day on Tuesday, November the 3rd, like we did in August. With so many people in and out, the staff has concerns, and I have concerns. I'll be working. I'll be around. But City Hall will be closed to the public that day for the election. Now, like I say, unless you all have an objection to it, that's my plan to do that.
About that?
No objection to me. Thank you.
That's, that's all, Governor.
You got a second from Bobby?
You got a second? Okay. Thank you all.
Is that, that's all you have?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have no, nothing on the agenda for appointment of boards, commissions, or committees, reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. That's Tana Preservation Alliance. Mr. Carver?
This is a good one. Building inspection. It's Thursday. We're going to try and finish up the contract with Perrin and say that we are done with that phase of it. The data will go in the first week of November. Walter State's already moved in some classroom furniture, and they'll be doing that as well. I think Lucas is putting some of his stuff in this weekend. Maybe, yes. So, I mean, there will still be little things going on up there. While we transition to get the building open, parking lot will be one of the last things we do, but we're there. If Mayor's got, being there recently, it's gone through a major transformation the past couple weeks. So it turned out way better than I thought it would at one point. I thought I'd have to leave town in shame because of how it was going, but it got back on track. So I think we'll have a pretty special day when we get that thing open for real.
Gary, what are they going to do with that hole that's in the side of like where the old gym used to be? What are you going, it's still been open all the time. What are you going to do?
Oh, it's a crawl space. We'll board it back up in case we need. We're leaving it open in case we have building materials that we might need to try and store down there, wrap them up and store, but it'll be boarded back up whenever we're done.
I would encourage anyone that, if you've seen the before pictures, to go up there and take a look now, and I think you'd be encouraged by what you've seen. I was impressed. I went in last week, and I was kind of very impressed at what I saw in terms of how much change was made in that structure. So obviously, it's been a little bit of a pet project of mine and Tana Preservation Alliance, so very pleased to see how it turned out. I would encourage anybody to go up and take a look if you, and call me anytime. I'll take you up there if you want to have an escort. It really looks good.
Thank you.
Is that all you got, Gary? Okay?
Yes, unless anybody had any questions.
Yeah, any questions? Okay. Item A is old business, unfinished business. That is item A, consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2020-07, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2020-07, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2020-2021 for Newport Grammar School. This would be the second reading. I spoke to Ms. Burchett today on another matter, and she asked me to tell the council that this was a fairly ordinary budget amendment to just bring their budget into balance.
Okay. All right, you've heard the resolution. We will need a motion to approve.
Make that motion to approve the budget.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the board to approve the ordinance. That was on the second reading for number 2020-07, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School. It has been properly seconded. We will need a roll call for approval, please.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Any nays? Obviously none, so motion carries. New business. Item A, consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2020-08, amending the city of Newport Municipal Code Title 12, Building Utility, et cetera Codes, Chapter 1 Building Code, Section 103 Schedule of Permit Fees.
This updates our permit fees. I don't know when the last time they were updated was, but looking at how we compare to other communities near us in this area, what they charge for a building permit and the services that the planning and building inspection provide, this brings us up to par with them. And I'd be happy to take any questions on the updates as they're written. This was approved and forwarded to the council by the Planning Commission.
And are these fees, you said they're comparable to what other surrounding counties are charging? So did we do, we actually did a survey?
Yes, yes.
To determine what fees were?
I looked at everybody that touches this, and it's still lower than some, but I mean, Green County generated over a hundred thousand. They've got more building going on, but their fee schedule was a little, little different. It's comparable to theirs.
Okay. All right. You've heard, you've heard the resolution? We need a motion to approve?
Make that motion to approve that.
All right. We have a motion by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Knight, for consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2020-08, amending the city of Newport Municipal Code Title 12 Building Utility, et cetera Codes, Chapter 1 Building Code, Section 103 Schedule of Permit Fees. It has been properly seconded. We need, will approve by the normal sign of aye?
But this is a ordinance, Mayor. We need a roll call.
Need roll call? Okay. Need a roll call, please.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Any nays? Motion carries. Item B is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2020-09, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Newport, Chapter 3, General Provisions, Section 309 Signs, Prohibited Signs, and Electronic Reader Board.
Okay, this is another ordinance that will update our current code. Ricky Faust actually brought this to my attention a couple months ago about how currently if he does any kind of electronic sign, it has to go in front of the Planning Commission, and that could potentially slow him down for, you know, up to a month, weeks if not an entire month. So we rewrote it so that Mark or myself could do approval based on certain criteria which is laid out in the ordinance. And the biggest thing other than that is it prohibits any type of electronic sign in the C1, which is downtown. So we want to kind of protect the character of what we've got in downtown as we redevelop downtown. We want to, the electronic sign just didn't seem like it went with what we, what we want out of downtown. But the rest of the city, it keeps everything the same except it allows the, it doesn't require Planning Commission approval for the electronic sign.
All right. Okay. Heard the presentation. We need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2020-09 to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Newport, Chapter 3, General Provisions, Section 309 for signs, prohibited signs, and electronic reader board. The motion has been properly seconded. We need a roll call to approve.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C is consideration of parking plan for McSwing and Mims.
Our last one, and I'll go away, I promise. The page that I've got you there's got two of the, the language and two sections of our, of our code talking about the indicating parking angles. By my opinion, and my inference of what we've got here, I don't think that the angle parking on Mims and McSwing is appropriate for the width of the street. So I have a very crude diagram of what, and we'll just, the street department will do it. This doesn't require any additional engineering or anything like that, but we're going to change the angle parking on Mims and McSwing to all parallel. And I want you to approve it because I'm sure someone is going to be upset that something is different when they, you know, when the first time they drive down the street. But on Mims, you have people either blocking the sidewalk with a large truck, or they are so far out in the road that you can't safely pass two vehicles. It only makes sense to do it this way, and it lines us up with what we have in our own code. I think it's a safety issue as well as a compliance issue for ourselves.
And just looking at your, at the information that you provided, it looks like you're going to lose a few parking spaces, but it does provide for additional spaces in the lot.
Yes, and this is something, I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot I was going to mention that. But there is a net loss removing, or just going to parallel parking on the two streets, but Mayor and I are going to meet with Commercial Bank that owns the lot. The county, and I think Coach actually helped broker the deal that the county rents this lot over here. And the Commercial Bank also, the lot that's on McSwing, if you can see it, it's a pretty good size lot, that we're going to negotiate with them and see if maybe they would, what they would think about us taking that over. And, because it needs to be, it needs a little bit of TLC, nothing that would, we wouldn't require a whole lot of money that we could do to make it more attractive to people parking in that lot, getting off the street, as well as they own the area behind the pharmacy and, the building between the pharmacy and their bank building over here. They own that lot. So we'd also like to try and negotiate something with them about yearly lease with, with them for a dollar or something, just so that we could add more public parking.
That would make a whole lot of difference in the parking down there if people would use that.
Yes, sir.
You know, we went to the president, and he, you know, gave us permission to park there. I thought that was awful nice of Commercial Bank to try to help our citizens find places to park. And people don't realize it or don't take advantage of it, but it's a lot more parking space there if they'd use it.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's the idea. We'll do some signage or something, because with the new downtown signage we're getting, to try and draw people into those spots instead of, if they're upset about losing some, a couple of spots on the street. That's the point.
Some parking spaces are grown up and stuff now, got bushes and stuff. We have to clean that up.
Yeah, we'd like to get in, I'd like, because it's, it's the county's purview now since they do, they have the lease, but I think that I would like to have command of it, to go in and do a little bit of work in it and try and clean it up a little bit, if we can get that worked out. That's, we, Mayor and I haven't got a chance to speak with the bank president yet.
I've spoken to him in a preliminary way at another meeting, but he seemed amenable to helping us out in any way we can, he could, if the county was, would be cooperative with us also. So obviously, they're renting that for, I think, a dollar a year.
Yeah, I think that was the agreement they came up with, yeah.
They're not fully utilizing that lot.
No.
So, okay. We need a motion.
Yeah, you've heard the, heard the consideration, man. We need a motion to approve the plan?
I make a motion to approve the plan.
I'll second.
Okay, we do have motion on the board then for consideration of parking plan for McSwing and Mims. It has been properly seconded. We don't need a roll call for this one. This will be, will approve by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 10 is bids, purchases, and expenses. Item A is consideration of bids for Peterbilt with curb tender backpack leafer truck for the street department.
Try to say that faster. That oven that comes across, sound like a jet plane coming across your house or...
Well, it's been there, I've been there 22 years. It's our knock. It's about wore out. We have to replace burns, the propeller constantly. I mean, it's just constant battle trying to keep the leaves up and that thing going down. And it's old, getting parts for it's getting, be more difficult also.
We've been having to get them manufactured. We have to get somebody tooling die or something to fabricate them. You can't buy parts for it. You got to take the old broken parts and go to William Lancaster or somebody and get them to make them. You can't buy, can't buy parts for it anymore.
But as, you know, the Peterbilt truck and then the municipal equipment is where we're getting the thing, and it's on the Sourcewell contract, which is government contract. We're members of it. I'd like for you to be able to approve this and let us get this leafer to, you know, help get the leaves up. It's one man, which you have to have two on it, but you work from the inside. You don't have to be out there and all that stuff no more. And it just would really help the man, plus help us, you know, keep them up quicker.
Okay. Are there any monies out there to help with this? Any grants or anything like that? Or is it just...
I'm not aware of any, but was this, I think this was, it was taken out of the budget originally when the pandemic hit, and I think since we had, Kerry's egg money come back in, it was put back in the budget. So is that correct, James?
Well, we'll have to have another reading on it, but yeah.
Okay. Appreciate the job y'all are doing all over town, all of the department heads in here. I appreciate the job y'all do. I see what you're doing.
We thank you, Coach. We try our best. And like I say, I've been here 22 years, and we've come a long way with equipment. When I started here, we had a backup. You couldn't hit no, we're on the ground with it. You know, it's, we've come a long ways getting new equipment, new trucks, and better, you know, resources to get stuff done.
One thing about this too, when I talk to the department heads about bringing back projects we had cut, this is one of the more expensive things, just being a piece of equipment. It is the most expensive piece of equipment that anybody asks for this year. But what you're up against, even before the pandemic hit, and even more so it's worse now, is if we order it, it's going to take us months and months to get it. So if we ordered it tomorrow, we probably wouldn't have it till May, April, May, somewhere in that timeframe. So that's why we needed to get it ordered so we could even get it back in this fiscal year, and we wouldn't write a check for it until, we don't have to pay for it till we get it. So we were just wanting to go ahead and try to get approval so we could get it ordered and get it, get it queued in on their manufacturing list so that the, as I was saying, the quicker you order it, the quicker you'll get it. And you're still looking at late into, well into next year before that'll happen.
Possibility of bidding the next budget year?
It's possible that it's, we're hoping not, but it's possible it could take that long, yes, sir.
Steve made the motion on the board.
Yeah, I'm going to make the motion to shift the bid for that leafer truck. We definitely need it.
We have a motion then on the board for consideration of bids for Peterbilt with curb tender backpack leafer truck for the street department. We need a roll call for approval.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
I want to thank you all very much for letting us get there.
Thank all of y'all watching this, Tim, Lisa.
All right. All right, we are now at comments from citizens. Is there anyone that here that wishes to be heard on any matter today, tonight?
Comments from citizens.
You know, we can't hear or nothing, the board. Can I pull this down without talking, or not?
Take it.
No, I'm here for the people on Martini Street. And anyway, it's just some things that's taking place at the pawn shop, but they're coming over on, which he owns it, but they're coming on residential property, wanting to make an entrance. You know, he's posted and everything, and to come out on Martini Street. Okay, they went through this with Kentucky Fried Chicken. They went through it, but on the other corner. And I think, see, I tried to get on the agenda or whatever, which is calling, and they wouldn't let. That's a few weeks ago, but this is something I think needs to be done. These ladies that live up through there, I mean, they're old and getting nervous, but anyway, but anyway, it, I think it needs to be looked at. The, you know, the person, and he's trying to pull the wool off, over people's eyes to do everything under the table, and it's not right. And I hope, you know, that somebody looks into it before it occurs, and then they just open it up. If they do it, McDonald's liable, the Bible Butler's place, they do it. You know, it's just going, and we don't want that to be a street from restaurants or pawn shops or anything else. You know, they hollered that it was going to be, he's just cleaning up. Well, that's, that's a bunch of bull. You know, I know how he is, and, and it's just the way it is. And I know he's friends with people in this room, you know, but, and I don't want no hard feelings, because we do work for the city, but, you know, right's right and wrong's wrong in my book. And I think this is dead wrong with what's about to take place. You know, it's just, it's just trying to, I'll be quiet. I was hoping nobody wouldn't say nothing, or somebody's saying something. And we hope that somebody in here looks into it and, you know, and don't push it under the table. These people up ours lived there 60 years, you know, to be, try to be bullied and stuff, you know, and it's going to hurt their value, their property. You know, with them trailers and stuff, getting pawned and come up through our shooting and thing, it's, it's not right. But anyway, that's what I've got to say, and I hope somebody looks into it and, you know, inform, inform somebody about what's taking place. You know, I'm not, I'm not the smartest person in the world, but I, I don't think that you can come over on residential property. It's not zoned out. You can't zon the property, and you just can't do it unless it's rezoned or something. Is that right or wrong? You know, I don't know. I don't know about all this, but like I said, I think it needs to be looked into, and...
He'd have to bring that in front of the, just down the...
Well, I haven't spoken to Kendall. I know I spoke to you after you spoke to Kendall, but I have had some of the neighbors to call me about it. And when I first became aware of it, which was just about a week before you called me, that you had talked to Kendall, was the first I'd heard of it. And so, and I'll let Gary tell you what he told me instead of me trying to relay that conversation, but I immediately, after the ladies called me about it, I went and talked to Gary, excuse me, and asked, was he aware of it, and had any kind of a building permit been applied for or, or anything at all? You know, what information could he give me on it? And he shared what information he had with me on it, which was no permit had been sought, and to his understanding, it was, he was building a drive that he could drive from, he had moved into a rental property that he owned there now, that lives there, and was going to use, they'd built him a drive to where he could drive straight over to work and not have to go all the way around, and he was doing some landscaping. And so after you called me, I went up and looked at it myself to see what it looked like. And from just looking at it, it looked like it was what Gary had said, you know. Now, as far as his intent, which Gary has spoken with him, I have not spoken with him. But as far as his intent, I mean, I can't get in his head and know what his intent is. But until he violates the law, there's not a whole lot we can do. He has a right to make a drive across his property. He has a right to contour his property in different ways. One of the things, one of the ladies mentioned to me was, that the rumor was he was going to build some mini storages in there, and it's a tiny backyard. I don't know how you could do that in there. Another one said that he was doing a drive-through where people would come through and come in off the highway and then go out through Martini. But, you know, that's another rumor, so I, again...
I keep them on the internet.
Let's see, let's see, I don't get on there.
I don't either. I just wonder if somebody's telling me.
But, you know, and that's the extent of what I know. Now, like I say, Gary has spoken with him. I have not. And Gary... Now, like I say, Gary has spoken with him, I have not, and Gary, what I know other than going and looking at it, which I did personally, but Gary spoke with him personally, and so Gary can tell you what he's told him, but that's, that is what I know about it. But the one thing, and when I got back to the ladies that called me about it and after I went and looked at it, I told them, you know, look, he can't do anything to violate, violate the law because we're watching him, and, you know, that's all we can do. You know, I can say, you know, I'm fed up, but I can put on the internet that I'm fed up and I'm going to go shoot Steve Smith, and, you know, that's, you shouldn't put crap like that on there, but unless you act on it, you technically, there's not a whole lot can be done about it other than talk to you about it, until you make a move to do something you're not supposed to. We don't have any other than to go and warn you not to do it, that's all the authority we have at this point.
There's a difference between a driveway and 18-wheelers coming in your backyard, too.
Right, you know.
It's personal.
Like I say, the, the way Gary related to me, and again, he can speak for himself, but was that he just wanted a way to drive from, to drive onto his property from his house. And so, that's, that is all I know about it. But I am going to be keeping an eye on it because I promised those ladies, whom I know personally, that I, I mean, and I'm sure wouldn't tell somebody I'll do something I won't do. And I told them, I will keep an eye on it, and I will, and I've told Gary to do the same thing, and I've told Grant to do the same thing, to keep an eye on it.
Forrest invited me to come over and watch too, and I haven't got over there, but minus that, there's not going to be this open for this for him only, but.
And I think that, and I even made this comment this afternoon when we were talking about this, but it might come up tonight. I think that since attention has been drawn to it, it may have backed him off. You know, a lot of people, and I'm not being accusatory, but a lot of people will do what they can get by with, and if he had something like that in mind, you know, he may have thought, well, he can just do it, nobody will say anything, and now that there's been a stink about it, then he may have backed off on it. But, but he's telling us that's not, that's, that's not what he's up to, so.
Just watch.
Well, we're going, I'm going, well, I'm going. But I've already been up there. Well, that's what I heard, but I didn't see it because I don't get on, I don't get on Facebook. I boycott social media, I don't get on it.
Yeah, I'm good. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Gary, you'd like to add anything?
I don't want to shoot Steve Smith, I just want to start with that. What, okay, and well, we'll not attempt to get the head for Clevinger, but that's a fool's error.
Well, that's what I said earlier, I'm not going to try to get in his head.
It's not, it's not in that game, but his, according to him and his intent, and I will always do my job, I know that every, I know that he and I are pals and that, but I'm always going to do my job for City of Newport. If he's starting breaking the law, if I have to accuse myself, we'll get someone, we'll go up there and stop him for doing something against our rules. But his intent, according to him, is to pave around, or not roundabout, but a continuous path around the shop so that if you, now if you pull in, you have to back out, it's awkward. Now you'll be able to drive around the shop and get out. That's one part of the project. They wanted to then attach to that drive-around a path to his house that he's living in. There's no bill permits for driveways or anything like that, so nothing's on file, and he can do that. Now, if it becomes an issue with traffic, high traffic going from the shop through to Martini, I mean, we can always politely ask him to rope that off to keep through traffic from going through his property, but, I mean, you give him the private property rights there at some point, so, but, Mr. Fitch said, we'll keep an eye on it, I mean, it's not, we don't, we don't, even if, even if we do know him and, and, probably more than he should sometimes, but even if all that, we're still not going to let him, you know, if his dark intent is to paralyze people on Hain Street, we're not going to allow that.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, thanks, Gary.
Thanks for not wanting to shoot me. I was only going to threaten you.
Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard tonight? If not, then we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm making the motion.
And we have a motion on the board and it's properly seconded, please. You guys can be split. All in favor? All opposed?